Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Brinson.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Pastor and my friend Aaron Golden from Union Point Church who give the prayer tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I just had one word I wanted to share with us right from the Scripture, Isaiah 43. Isaiah says, "See, I am doing a new thing; now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in the wilderness and streams in the wasteland." So my prayer tonight for us is that we see the new thing, the fresh thing, the thing that is flourishing, that God desires to do in our midst for our people. And so our job is to only perceive it. So, Lord, give us wisdom. Amen to that.
Amen.
Okay, let's pray real quick. Jesus, thank you for your word. Thank you for these servants that are here tonight, how they love you, how they love your city. And, Lord, we pray in all of the deliberation tonight, and all the things that are on the agenda, and all the things that will fill this time, that you will help us to see the fresh, the new thing, the thing that you desire to do in your people and for your people. Lord, give us the perception to perceive it, and give us the wisdom to know how to act and engage it. We just pray these things, and all your blessings in this town, your name we pray. Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call a roll.
Alderman Creel?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kenzie?
Here.
Alderman Bass?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Okay, Board, if you've had a chance to review the agenda and entertain a motion to approve it or changes that you might have.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Number four, request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk. First is Mary Slaughter of 3509 Windsor Drive.
Good evening.
Evening.
The saying goes Nero fiddled while Rome burned. My topic of concern tonight reminds me of that phrase. We've known and been warned for many years about climate change, yet the advocate for resisting that locomotive heading straight for us is remarkable. I live in Trent Woods, but worked shop and dine in New Bern. I consider it my town. We're fortunate in this part of the country the weather events have been mild compared to Phoenix or Texas. Since I'm a gardener and a nature observer, I have noticed the changes. What really upsets me deeply is the home attitude to the very real actions we can take now to mitigate the effects. Most particularly, two actions would make a difference. Institute policies that value existing trees, old trees particularly. We have some left in New Bern, Trent Woods, Greenbrier. Trees are hugely cited as a mitigation factor in climate change. Recently, in my neighborhood, a large section of land was clear cut, truck after truck after truck, hauled off lovely, large trees, most of them healthy and doing what trees do, adding oxygen to the air, sucking up excess water, providing a home for insects. Now, why would anyone want to provide a home for insects? In case you don't know, insects are essential to the continued existence of life on this planet. If they all die, humans will not be far behind. I know it's more trouble to preserve trees on a lot, and definitely more expensive, but growing new trees may not be simple going forward. It may even become impossible and cannot soon equal the value of the giants that were removed. Why not leave a buffer between lots, a few other selected trees? As leaders, you have the opportunity and the obligation to set public policies that are good for us all. It would take courage, but it can be done if you can find the will. Maybe if strict policies exist in New Bern, other communities like the one that I live in would take notice. It's possible we'll have no air conditioning at some point. That could happen. Big shade trees may save lives. The second thing, set up incentives for landscaping equipment that is less polluting. Right now, mini mowers cause as much pollution as a small car. We have used battery-operated or electric mowers and weed eaters for years at home. If someone else mows our yard, they will use our equipment. They work well. There are many other smaller things that can be done. Require city-sponsored events to use biodegradable cups, plates, and utensils. If the city bought in bulk, they might not be so terribly expensive, and several places have found that they are actually cheaper. Think of all that styrofoam and plastic that would not be permanently taking up space in the landfill. What an example you would set. We would put Raleigh to shame. Since we are fortunate to live on two rivers, our bar should be higher. Thank you for listening. The individual can only do so much, but cities can lead the way if you can find the will and the courage to ignore the critics and the uninformed and the nonbelievers. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing as well. Next up is Robert Griswold of 4807 Delph Drive.
Thank you for having us. I'm asking the Alderman and the mayor to consider moving the elections to coincide with other primaries and general elections on the even years. I believe you only need to request that from the state legislature to make the required moves. Due to redistricting, the prior administration served an extra eight months essentially with the elections moving back. Moving to the even years would have this administration serving an extra four months if you moved it out to the even years. Why am I asking this? In the even years, it would allow the election costs to be distributed across many more races rather than just the city races. Due to elections now happening over multiple early voting days, I see an immediate saving, first off, in poll workers, judges, and volunteer expenses. In the past elections, in 2013, the city elections had about 5,400 voters. In 2017, about 3,600 voters. In May of '22, about 5,700 voters. And July, the runoff, about 6,100 voters. That's, the election, I guess, is costing anywhere from $30,000 to $80,000. I'm just doing a wild guess, but that's probably $5 to $20 per vote. If that could be amortized across many more elections, we're ahead of the game. We can save an awful lot of money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ruth Cooper of 1022 Colleton Way.
Hi, everybody. Like my good friend and fellow RN and gardener, Web Slaughter, I live in Trent Woods, but I spend a lot of time in New Bern. Last year, on October 4th, I had a 76th birthday party at the shelter in Fort Totten Park. This year, on Saturday, October 7th, the Duffy Field Phoenix Project has reserved the Henderson Park Shelter in Duffy Field. We want folks to bring a buddy and help tidy up Duffy Field. At 9:00, we'll give out gloves, bags, grabbers, t-shirts, and maps of 10 areas that need litter to be picked up. At noon, we'll have hot dogs, chips, drinks, and birthday cake, and we'll also have a raffle for Walmart gift cards. You get a raffle ticket for every bag of litter that you pick up. There were 50 people and two dogs at my party last year. If we could get half that many people to come to Duffy Field, October 7th, our work would go fast. Pam Hawkins and others from Clean Sweep will be there. It's the day of the Fall Clean Sweep. Please consider asking a friend or neighbor to join you for this tidy up Duffy Field event. Bob Brinson came and wore his "It's Simple, Don't Litter" t-shirt at the last litter pickup, which was, I forget when, I think maybe May. Anyway, maybe the anti-litter campaign that Mayor Odom has told me you're working on, maybe with that, we won't need to keep doing this. And when I go to Duffy Field, I see less litter now than was there a year ago. But our goal is to have people litter Duffy Field less and for the residents to pick up any litter they see. So that's our goal. I know you've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so that's all I'm going to say, but I do hope to see you Saturday, October 7th. I've given Brenda sort of the information about it. If you could just bring a friend and come, you know, my husband and I don't plan to keep on doing this forever. I don't plan to keep on talking to you guys and picking up litter in Duffy Field, but we just need a better plan to help people, encourage them not to litter. I know George Child is somewhere out here, and they have some cameras that sometimes they can catch people dumping construction debris on vacant lots in Duffy Field. You know, tomorrow, I'm going to go over to the nuisance abatement people and give them a list of some vacant lots that have, you know, weeds and grasses high that need to be cut down. But there's just a lot of issues. There's just almost, you know, too many to totally take care of them all, but we can work on it. But thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Byron Keen. Byron, you didn't provide your address, so if you would, please state your address for the record when you approach the microphone.
Good day.
Good day.
Good evening. My address is 214 Saratoga Lane. Good day, everyone. Hope everyone's been well. Today, I just want to discuss some issues that may come in the future, you know, planting a seed. I like to talk about the aging, the aging population as we age here. I was reading Wall Street Journal today. They're talking about how more baby boomers are becoming homeless due to fixed income, global inflation. That's something to consider, something to think about in New Bern. Also, I like to talk about AI, what we call the Fourth Industrial Revolution. Many wonderful cities, small cities like New Bern, when they big employers like Mown and Bosch leave, you see what occurs. So just something to think about. Well, what happened? You know, as technology advanced, laborers get cheaper, machines are cheaper than people. So what would happen to New Bern, Mown, and Bosch, though? That's something to consider. Also, there's the surge in vape shops. I see more and more vape shops. Talk of teenagers, there's really not much to do around here. I feel like it needs some way to address that. Vapors, some people consider it, it was a Financial Times article said that the future of vaping looks a lot like cigarettes. They're cheap, they're addictive, and they're everywhere. So, you know, I see more and more vape shop, when you talk to young people, they all have more and more things to do. That's one seed I want to plant. And lastly, the ability, we're coming to infrastructure, if there's some way possible, just have sidewalks that go from downtown New Bern all the way up Martin Luther King's Road, all the way up to Blue Boulevard, because that's a way to invite the entire community, you know, to create a connection, because right now, you know, I'm from a big city, it's seen fragmented. It's like you've got downtown New Bern, then you've got that up, I guess Walmart, so on and so forth. So just that simple, you know, simple infrastructure will create continuity throughout New Bern. And I thank you and continue to do the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's all the petition of citizens, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's the pleasure of the Board. Make a motion to adopt a consent agenda, as you.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Creel.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Number eight is introduction of staff. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. We've got a few new faces that have started working for us in New Bern, and so I want to bring their names up, say a little bit about them, and give them an opportunity to tell themselves about, talk to you about themselves. First one in fire rescue, we've got Jim McConnell. Jim, come on up. He is currently serving as our interim fire chief. Jim has been with the city for 25 years, and we're looking forward to what Jim can do in that position.
Thank you, sir. Alderman, mayor, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to have this position as interim fire chief. I'm looking at working with you very diligently on building the New Bern Fire Department and making it bigger and better and building for the future of our citizens and the city of New Bern. Any questions for me? Thank you very much for your time and opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next one is Deanna Treble. She is our MPO Administrator. She comes from Jacksonville, where she served as the MPO since 2017.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me this evening. So a little bit about myself, I have been a municipal employee for the last 20 years with the city of Jacksonville. I've been here in New Bern for about two months. I spent the last six years at Jacksonville as their MPO Administrator, and I look forward to seeing what I can bring with the help of not only the city of New Bern, but all of our member agencies as well. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next employee is Robert Goff. He is our Assistant Director of Development Services. Robert comes from Onslow County, where he has considerable experience in planning and zoning.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and the members of the Board. Thank you for having me, and thank you for welcoming me to the city of New Bern. Like Mr. Foster Hughes has said, I do bring a considerable amount of experience, all the way from permitting to planning to my current position as Assistant Director of Development Services. Prior to my service in local government, I served five years in the United States Marine Corps, and I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is Kendrick Stanton. He is our new zoning administrator. He comes from us from Onslow County, and he's got considerable experience in zoning, and he most recently received the Zoning Official of the Year Award.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the Alderman, myself. Once again, I'm Kendrick Stanton. I am your new land and community development administrator. So just a little bit about where I came from, it's Onslow County, and dealt with the citizens there in the best regard possible. It was a great experience, and I enjoy customer service as far as for what I do and how I engage with the public. And my hope is to absolutely take on that same role and responsibility here in the city of New Bern. I've been, I guess, very welcomed, or I felt very welcomed, and I can attest or say to that. Mr. Foster immediately came in, shook my hand, and that meant a lot to me, just starting out. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to serving citizens for New Bern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to all of you. I'm not going to answer any 910 area code phone numbers that I get calls from in the next couple of days, because it seems to be a theme there, but we're glad to have you here with the city. Item number nine, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution approving the installment financing agreement for the Stanley White Recreation Center. Ms. Ostrom.
So on August 8th, 2023, the Board conducted a public hearing on the financing of the construction for Stanley White Rec Center. The city's bond council published a notice of hearing in the Sun Journal that incorrectly stated the loan would not exceed 8.2 million. The ad should have stated the loan will not exceed 10 million. The bond council and city attorney concurred that a new notice needed to be published in a second hearing held prior to approval of the financing agreement. After conducting the hearing, the Board is asked to consider the resolution approving a financing agreement with TD Bank. John Mice with Wombo Bonds Dickinson is here, if you have any questions.
Does the Board have questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider the installment financing agreement for Stanley White Recreation Center. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing? Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have, actually, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Now, we would look to adopt a resolution approving the financing agreement.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the installment financing agreement for the Stanley White Recreation Center.
Second. Have a motion, a couple of seconds. I'll let the clerk choose. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 10 is a presentation on Project Lifesaver, Chief Gallagher.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Alderman. We are excited to be here tonight to provide a summary of a great program that is now available to the citizens here in the great city of New Bern. With me tonight, I have Ms. January Brown, Mr. David Bone, we have Chief McConnell, and Lieutenant Conway. Project Lifesaver is a premier search and rescue program operated internationally by public safety agencies and is strategically designed for at-risk individuals who are prone to the life-threatening behavior of wandering. The primary mission of Project Lifesaver is to provide timely responses to save lives, to reduce potential injuries for adults and children with the propensity to wander due to a cognitive condition such as Alzheimer's or dementia. Within 100 miles of New Bern, there are 17 other municipalities that have this program. A few years ago, members of the Dementia Friendly Community Task Force, which the New Bern Fire and Rescue and the New Bern Police Departments are members of this committee, began the process of evaluating the utility of bringing Project Lifesaver and how best to bring this valuable resource to our community. I wish to introduce Ms. January Brown, the Chairman of the Dementia Friendly Community Task Force, for some of her comments.
Hi, my name is January Brown. I am the Deputy Aging Director at Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging. I've seen firsthand what Project Lifesaver can do for individuals and felt that this was a strong resource needed here in New Bern, North Carolina. We gave a great deal of thought and funding options to make the program cost-effective by providing grants to assist in the program for the financial cost of clients in our community. Our executive director, David Boone, and myself diligently worked with New Bern public safety officials to work through the necessary memo of understanding and policy language to ensure that we can have a successful program here in New Bern. I would like to go ahead and ask Chief McConnell to go ahead and help outline a little bit more about the program.
So it's all about partnerships, and we've learned that in the past. The partnership we recorded with ourselves, the police department and fire department, we started in January 2022. We got trained by Project Lifesaver. They came down and gave a two-day course, and that two-day course provided training and certifications for our personnel in addition to train the trainers. So four of us within two in each department became trainers, so now we're training our personnel, and we have 52-plus individuals on each force able to provide this service to our citizens. Currently, we have receivers. They're strategically placed within the city. We have four of them, and once again, we're able to deploy them at the moment's notice when someone goes missing, an adult or a child.
So going based on what Chief McConnell says, this is the receiver, and this is the transmitter. It is put on a, kind of like a medicine, a hospital band, and it goes on, it's non-intrusive, it goes wherever the person wants. It can go on a wrist, it can go on an ankle. It's monitored by us on a 60-day rotation to change out the batteries. And so if the person were to leave or to walk away from their spouse at a mall or at a house, and we get the call, we do a triangulation method. So what happens is, we have this receiver, and it's picking up the signal. So when you have the police department or you have the fire department going out on the scene, it starts and we form a triangle, trying to figure out where the best location is, and then we can close in, fine-tune the receiver, and it can actually pick up somebody. We actually, it has worked. There have been individuals here in the city that this has been beneficial to, and they have left, and we found them within, what?
Under 30.
Under 30 minutes. We were able to find them. So this is a beneficial tool to the citizens of New Bern. Thank you.
So Mayor and Alderman, my name is David Bone. I'm the Executive Director for the Eastern Carolina Council. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your membership in our regional council. We are the council of governments that serves a nine-county region, and we thank you dearly for your membership in our organization. And we do look forward to welcoming Alderman Kenzie to our board as well. So again, we want to thank you for your partnership in this project. We look forward to many more partnerships with the city, and I do want to defer to Ms. Brown to talk a little bit about the vetting and onboarding for this program.
So the way that we've designed the program right now, our agency does all the referral and intake for a client, so we have caregivers that will be either referred to us by the police department, fire department, or call us directly. They call us at our phone number. I then go out to the home and do a home assessment and check the safety of the home, find out the diagnosis of the individual, and work with the caregiver, not only on trying to get them on board with the Project Lifesaver band, but also with home safety, such as door alarms, do we need to put some other types of things in place, such as respite, to help that caregiver in that caregiver journey, with that person with cognitive impairment. So we do ask that individuals contact our office at Eastern Carolina Council, which the phone number is 252-638-3185. So that way, I can come out and do the little home assessment and check for eligibility of program availability. And then I refer them to the police department or a fire department, who takes it from there, and then hopefully never has to go out and find the individuals, then they run the program after the intake.
Thank you, January. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this presentation, although this is not a new program, and it is not new technology. It is new to the city of New Bern, and it is new for the staff at the police department and fire and rescue. We will continue to monitor our program to address any shortfalls that may come up. We have an opportunity to learn a great deal from other agencies that have Project Lifesaver. We also believe that Project Lifesaver, as it is now here in our city, will draw others that may have loved ones to want to come to our city, that if by bad fortune their loved one is missing, we can find them. All we need is the transponder code, and we would be able to find them. Although this is a great benefit to our community for right now, only citizens of the city of New Bern will be eligible right now. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the Board have questions?
Yes, I have a question. Ms. Brown, I know you said that you would go out and make a home assessment for as eligibility is concerned, but at what point, is it based on your income?
No, this program is not income-based. It's not a Medicaid service. It's done through, currently, right now, we are assisting clients through the Older Americans Act funding, through the family caregiver support, so there is no income requirements, just that they are susceptible to wandering and have cognitive impairment.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Kenzie?
What about nursing homes? Will they be exempt from this program?
This is only for individuals in the public, and it would not be for an individual that's in a facility.
Okay.
So if they were to need something due to wandering, they would need to be in the appropriate placement, which would be a locked-down memory care unit for their safety.
Thank you.
So moving forward, once those funds are depleted, how, is this a reoccurring process through the state that you receive your funding?
So we currently receive funding through the Older Americans Act, DHHS. We have also, and even with the startup cost of this, we, our agency, went ahead and applied for grants. We went through the Alzheimer's Foundation of America to get the starting grant funds to get all the training done. So we will continue as an agency to possibly look at those other grant fundings, like currently, we're looking at another grant to possibly help with more training of further officers. So we are trying to help and assist with any funding that possible that we can to help keep this up and running. But currently, we do have quite a few bracelets in-house, which are the transponders. I think we have above 20 in-house, so we already have an arsenal ready for individuals that might need that remedy to sign up for it. So it isn't, it's not as if we have to wait a month for them to come on once we do the home assessment. We're pretty quick, within a week to two weeks, to get them up and running on the program.
Any more questions?
What's the range? So the range can vary, sir, depending on where you're at. Obviously, in the metro area or downtown, there's buildings and everything, and that's like Lieutenant Conway said, it's very important that we triangle like this. But once you're out in the wooded area or open area, it can go up to at least two miles, depending on what kind of structures or wooded area you're dealing with. Wintertime, it's a little easier, it goes a little further, but with the density of the growth of trees and bushes and stuff like that, it can lessen that. But we're looking at a mile and a half to two miles. But we're looking at a mile and a half to two miles, easy, but the triangulation is the most important, deploying these assets fast, in an area where we can triangulate a person.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
The program that you were trained for about maybe five or 10 years ago, what is the difference in this program and the one that you were trained in as well, and certified in?
So when you say the program a couple of years, 10 years ago?
You remember, you came before the board, I think, and you was certified in training to find people.
Yes, so this one here, the difference between this training is, it's actually, we identify the client, and these people will come forward knowing that they got an issue, and they can live with their loved ones with this issue. The training that we have in the past, as search and rescue personnel, we actually train for, it's been 24 hours past the person's been missing, or hours on dead. This is to resolve an issue that's current and being notified very fast. We can resolve it within 30 minutes, which we've seen. The additional training that we still have with our personnel is if somebody's gone missing without this program, for instance, lack of saying, is searching for a needle in a haystack. So without this technology and searching for that individual that just walks away, it takes a lot more resources, a lot more manpower, with equal dollars at the end of the day. But we do train, and we still have those capabilities of responding to those situations.
But I just wanted the public to know that we are trained both ways.
Yes, sir, we are.
And that we have an advanced system in place now.
Correct.
To locate the individual quicker.
Yes, sir, that is exactly right.
I just want them to know the difference.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much.
And one of the main points about this program, too, that's a key component, is it's not, we just, it's not a one-and-done. We put the bracelet on and hope that they call, their loved one goes missing. They're receiving continuous support between my agency, and also the assigned, either the Fire Department or the Police Department, that they're assigned to, because they do do home checks. Those batteries have to be checked every 60 days. So they're constantly getting that support from their community, knowing that, you know, we're trusted agencies to be calling in case of an emergency. So that's a continuous support that those citizens would receive as caregivers.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Sure.
May I have the fire?
Mark.
Okay, moving on to item number 11. Consider adopting an amendment to Resolution 23050 to designate a street closure for the 2023 Mum Feast event. Ms. Warren, I believe.
So back in May, the board adopted a resolution to close downtown streets for street cafes at the request of Swiss Fair. And recently, Swiss Fair has made a request to adopt one of those dates as Mum Feast, and they would like to make an amendment to that closure. It would be to close the streets at 5:00 instead of 6:00, to add 400 Pollock to that closure, the block of 400 Pollock, as well as all of the 300 block of Middle Street. I have Anne Marie Byrd here, who is events director with Swiss Fair and the coordinator for Mum Feast. So if you have any questions you would like to ask her, she is here to provide some information that may help you out.
Alderman Kinsey?
I would like to know, what was the attendance last year?
For the street cafes or Mum Feast?
For the close, it was a street closing.
Okay, I'll have to refer that to Anne Marie, because I do not keep numbers on their account, so. Would y'all like Anne Marie to come up and give?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Thank you for having me today. In regards to that particular question with street closures in general, I could give you numbers that are specific to Mum Fest, Mum Feast, and the Mum Fest Concert. In terms of overall street closures, I think that we'll need to defer that to TDA and Melissa Riggle in particular. They have new software that has been able to assess those numbers very specifically, and I can definitely meet with her this week and gather that information.
So that has already taken place?
Yes, the previous street closures, we could gather that information for, and I could give you information from last year's Mum Fest, but right now, we're just dealing with what's coming up in the future.
One other thing, have everyone been, everyone is in agreement to closing the streets with their business?
Yes, and I can speak to that specifically. So how this has proceeded so far, as Carrie mentioned, the closure was already established and approved. What Swiss Fair is specifically asking for are a couple of additional requests for Mum Feast. So Mumbunf, as we all love, is made up of three different separate events. The first one is the kickoff event, which would be the 29th, which is Mum Feast, and that's really what we're here to discuss today. The second event would be Mum Fest on October 14th and 15th, and then the concert on the 21st. So the question really has been, so far, we had a limited amount of street closure in terms of which blocks. So Alderman Prill and I sat down and talked about this recently, and discussed the layout and the planning for Feast. He had some questions, and so I just wanted to share the details with you on how it's going to be, we would like for it to be modified. So the street closure for the 29th right now is approved for 200 Middle and part of 300 Middle, and I wanted, that was one of Alderman Prill's questions, what part of 300 Middle? That goes from First Citizens to Broad Street, so where the Chelsea is. So it's only part of the block. That accommodates, to answer your question, Alderman Kinsey, are the businesses in agreement? So we're leaving certain areas.
With the change, with the new change.
Yes, but that's not, that part's not new. That was already agreed upon. But we're accommodating businesses such as Bay Leaf and the Health Food Store that are in that block, that they still want parking, and they want the ability of cars to be able to come in and out and park. So 300 Middle is only a partial closure. Same situation, we have 400 Pollock. 300 Pollock was already approved. We're asking that 400 Pollock also be closed because of the placement of the physical stage. We have live musicians coming in. Parks and Rec is going to be erecting a stage right on the corner of Middle and Pollock, so right next to the Elks Building. In order to place that stage there, the rest of that street becomes the dead end. I've gone to each of those businesses personally, and talked to the Baptist Church, to New Bern Civic Theater, to the dry cleaners, and to Summerall SUG attorneys, and I've given them a written notice, which I can share with you. And they all agree that because we are not going to block their ingress or their egress, we're going to put the barricade right at the end of where the Civic Theater is, we're not going to impede their business at all. And that made them happy. So they are, they're satisfied with that. Lynn Harical, the Executive Director of Swiss Fair, did send out an email to all the business owners and the residences, giving them a heads-up that Mum Feast was going to be on the 29th. So they have been notified in writing, and then we are all, we are personally delivering notices to residents into their mailbox, and then I've also had individual meetings as well.
And also to receive.
Yes, yes. So the other thing that I would like to clarify is why? Why are we asking to move this from a 6 o'clock closure to a 5 o'clock closure? The gist of that is, is that because we're, this is not a normal street closure. This is the kickoff event for all of Mum Fest. This is the beginning of a real celebration for our community that we should all be very excited about. We're bringing in tourists, it's going to build revenue, you know, it's one of the most exciting events of our season. So we're starting it off by having this live band, and with the help of Parks and Rec and putting up that stage, that takes time. If we don't start that process until 6 o'clock, and I can tell you, I'm out there with Parks, with Public Works, boots on the ground on Fridays for those street closures, trying to get the cars moved, so we can set up these street cafes. It takes time, it takes at least 30 minutes. It also takes about 45 minutes to erect that stage and that 20-by-20 tent, and get the sound equipment in place, so we can start to prepare for the band. So we're requesting that this begins, the process begins at 5:00, so the music can actually begin at 6:00. That's positive for the businesses, because music is a great draw. People are going to want to come, they're going to want to stay, they're going to want to shop, they're going to want to spend money. It's good for all of us. It's also true that when Parks and Rec and the city puts on musical events in the park, that they're starting at 6:00. That's positive, too. Of course, keeping that same kind of timeline, the music ends sooner, we're going to have less complaints, I think, from residents, because the music isn't carrying on so far into the evening, which is yet another positive. So those are some of the reasons why we are needing this, keeping in mind, too, that we're going to have three or four food trucks that need to be placed on the streets, and that the five restaurants that need to set up their cafes, that also takes time, too. They can't set up until the cars are gone. So it's, there is a series of tasks that has to happen. One hour may not seem that much, but it really is terribly helpful from an event planning perspective. It's helpful for all of us across the board. I do have a couple of letters here also from Cypress Hall, and from Baxter's, and a copy of the notice that I have sent out to the various businesses and residences. Could I pass this off? Thank you. So the only other issue that came up on the revisions at Swiss Fair is request, or a request to you, is that there be added a rain date on October the 6th. Usually, we wouldn't have to have a rain date, but under the circumstances, Carolina East Health Systems is our sponsor for the event, and if we do get rained out, we would like to be able to have a backup plan, so we can still have those performers come back out, we still have a chance to utilize them as our sponsors, and have the kickoff. It's a, it's a great event. So I hope that we have your support, and I would just like to say for the record how grateful I am personally. I spend 12 months a year planning Mum Fest. How grateful I am to all of our city for the support that you give Mum Fest specifically. It's just amazing to me, everything that you do. So thank you very, very much, and if there are any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a pleasure, the board, on item number 11.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an amendment to Resolution 23-050 to designate a street closure for the 2023 Mum Fest event.
Second. Have a motion, a second, and further discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 12, consider adopting a resolution approving the New Bern Area MPO 5303 Grant Contract with the NCDOT. This is Deanna Treble. Did I pronounce that right?
It's Treble.
Treble, got it.
But.
It's all about the treble, not the bass.
It's all about, yeah, treble bass, or trouble.
I'm sure you've heard that before.
Either one, I'll answer to all of them, so. So the city of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, is identified as a direct recipient of Section 5303 Federal Transit Administration Urban Planning Funds. Every year, NCDOT requires that the MPO lead planning agency, which is the city of New Bern, approve a resolution authorizing their representative to sign the grant agreement with NCDOT in order to receive these funds. For fiscal year 2024, the total of 5303 allocation is $60,080, with a federal and state share of $54,072, and a local share of $6,008, to be provided by the member agencies of the MPO, as identified in the attached memo. And so the request this evening is to consider adopting a resolution approving the NC MPO 5303 Grant Contract with the NC Department of Transportation. And I'll answer any questions that anyone might have.
Does the board have questions on item number 12?
There are no questions. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the New Bern Area MPO 5303 Grant Contract with North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and further discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 13, consider adopting a resolution establishing a Municipal Service District Advisory Committee. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, before we get to that, I missed one of our bright, shiny new faces, and so I want to make that correction. I want to bring David Fischel up. He is from Chillicothe, Ohio. He serves as Director of Public Works in that community, and he is now our Assistant Director. And so, Dave, can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, Board of Alderman and Mayor Odom. Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes, for the introduction. Now, I did, I grew up with three wonderful sisters, and so I'm used to sometimes having an elbow my way to the front of the rooms. Anyway, very excited for this opportunity, appreciate getting to meet our city's leadership. My background, Ohio, is where I was, where I came from. I had about 15 years in the engineering consultant design world, mostly roads and bridges, and then five years in the municipal government with the city of Chillicothe, which just so happened to coincidentally also be the first capital of Ohio. So that was kind of nice, coming to New Bern and having some similarities. It's also similar size. But in this new position, I'm looking forward to, my goal being is bringing some value, adding value to Director Child's department. You know, and it's my hope that in the future, I'll make an impact here in the city, now home, not only myself, but my wife, my four children, two dogs, a lizard, and a little frog. Thank you.
Well, Dave, foster always saved the best for last. You're the man.
Glad to have you here. Back to item number 13, is consider adopting a resolution establishing an MSD Advisory Committee. Mr. Hughes?
Okay, so in our August 22 meeting, we brought a resolution forward to establish the MSD Advisory Committee. After some discussion, we received some comments from the board, and so this resolution addresses those items, and among those are increasing the number of ex officio members from four to five for an at-large appointment for the Board of Alderman, and the term limits be set at two successive terms for residential members and commercial members representing the same commercial interest. The document has also been revised to specify that the board can replace any voting member who does not attend three of the four quarterly meetings, or who no longer owns real property or resides within the MSD. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
I have a question, please. Looking at the structure of the advisory committee, it says members may not serve more than two successive terms as a commercial member representing the same commercial interest, or as a residential member. Would you explain that, please?
So in the commercial category, there are, I believe, five or six different categories. So if you had an at-large property member, a large property owner, or a retail property owner that wanted to serve, they could serve no more than two terms representing that particular seat. They would have an opportunity, if the governing board nominated them to another seat, to continue to serve.
Okay, so based on that language, if a person qualifies on the advisory committee to serve either as a commercial member or a residential member, total, how many years if they qualified for all six, two successive terms? What is the total that one potential member, how many years could they serve?
So one term is three years, two successive terms is six years.
Okay. So if they qualify for all six, so they could serve their three years, and then go to the next seat, go to the next seat, that is a total of how many years for one person if they qualify? Potentially?
Potentially, forever.
Forever.
Yeah, forever. And it depends on, again, who the governing board nominates to those seats.
The only thing that I wanted to add to that was just simply, the advisory committee should be structured to provide opportunity for every qualified person. should be structured to provide opportunity for every qualified person who wants to participate. And that it not lend itself to a monopoly of a handful of people, but for equity, small business interests, other people, everyone should have an opportunity. And I know that judgment is left up to the board, but I believe that we should, when we structure, we should have that in mind, that every person, every voice has value, that every person have an opportunity to serve that desire to do so without it being monopolized by potentially a handful of people. So I'd like to see that included in the structure, that language included in the structure. I don't know how we would voice that, or I'll turn to the attorney to see if there's a way to voice that, given the circumstances, that one person could serve on and on and on. Is there a way that it can be included in this advisory committee, the way it's structured?
Well, to start bigger picture, we're just talking about property owners within the MSD. Okay, so those are the folks that pay the tax, and the theory behind having the committee is those folks who are paying the tax ought to be the ones who can make a recommendation to this board about what projects they want to fund with their own tax money. Okay, so so two big points, just the universe of those taxpayers, and they only make recommendations. You have the final say. So with that in mind, the idea is to ensure that those people that have the larger property interests have the opportunity to serve. Doesn't mean that this board has to appoint them, but in your example, if a property owner owned six different categories of commercial property, that's going to make them a very large taxpayer in this group. And that would give them, in the current structure, the opportunity to ask to be appointed for successive terms, as opposed to not even having the legal ability to ask to serve. But just because they have the right to ask doesn't mean this board has to appoint them.
Thank you.
But Attorney Davis, you know, I concur with Alderman Royal because I was just saying myself, for example, my property may not be worth a million dollars, so the other members' owners' properties is multi-million billions, and I may never get a chance to serve on the board. So how, I agree with you. I think some changes need to be done there because my million dollars is just as good as the of billions and billions of dollars. So how do I get, how do I become one of those members? If it's a reoccurring thing with the hire in property owners?
Yes, ma'am. Well, again, to zoom out, we've got ten members that own property that are on the committee. Four are residential. We're not talking about money there. We're talking about, do you live in the MSD? If so, you can ask.
But isn't the bottom line, tax dollars is money?
Yes, ma'am, but you're not considering that in any of this.
Why not?
Well, you're free to, but you don't, but you don't have to. So what you're looking at are nominating four people who own homes in the MSD. Okay, that's one category. Then there is a commercial category of six individuals. And this board can can will nominate those people at every term. And you'll have on your application, you will see the applicant and the property that they own. They may own one parcel, they may own twenty parcels, and you'll see that on the application. And then you can decide who you would like to serve. That's entirely up to you. The legal concept we're talking about is someone being precluded from even asking because they've served two terms, and therefore, they no longer have a right to ask you to serve again. So all we're saying is they have a right to ask, and you have a right to say no.
There is one other item that I'd like to bring up to make sure that the board is comfortable with this process. The way this is structured is that those individuals who are ultimately appointed to the MSD advisory committee will serve a three-year term, which means that three years from the date of that appointment, every member is up for consideration. That's different than what we have for any any other board or commission of the city wherein they are set up with staggered terms. So I just want to make sure that the board is comfortable with that format, where you have an entire membership of a board that is going to be coming up for consideration at one time.
Do you have a recommendation, then?
Well, the only, I think the only other alternative would be to look at setting up staggered terms for the ten members. That way, you'd have maybe, you know, a couple would be serving initially one-year terms, two or three others would serve two-year terms, the balance would be three-year terms. That way, you're introducing a staggered process to it. It's it's just a little bit out of the ordinary for a board or commission or a committee to have terms that all can do at one point in time, at least in my experience. It's a little bit out of the ordinary. So I just want to make sure the board's comfortable with that.
The member would actually serve until reappointed, correct?
Yes, sir. And Alderman Preel raises a good point, and the distinction that staff and I considered on this, with our our public bodies, where institutional knowledge really matters, it's very helpful to to have a staggered term where you've always got those folks on there with several years of experience. In our view, with the MSD, most of the folks who live in the MSD are up to speed on what the issues are and how it works. And the learning curve for the MSD is going to be a total of five minutes. So we didn't worry too much about losing institutional knowledge because you're going to have staff members as ex officio members on that board. So to the extent that someone doesn't understand it, within five minutes, they will understand it. That being said, we can certainly do staggered terms if the board would like that.
Good. Alderman Brinson?
I'm just, in the in the spirit of being cooperative, I hear what Alderman Royal and Alderman Best are saying. And if you couple that with holding staggered terms, as Alderman Preel was discussing, if someone was to rotate off and having had their two, three-year terms, and if they were staggered, they would then have to wait until another position was vacant in order to be renominated. So there would, by the structure, be a gap between successive terms, is my thought. So that's kind of an argument to satisfy what Alderman Royal and Alderman Best are bringing up, an argument for staggered terms as well.
Alderman Kinsey?
I agree with Alderman Preel on the stagnant term, because you always would have someone in place to explain and pretty much in five minutes, and be able to know the ins and outs about the organization, about the voting, just how they vote and where they head.
Attorney Davis, we haven't taken a vote, but I think I'm pretty good at reading tea leaves. If the board decided to go with staggered terms, you need to rewrite the resolution, put it on our next agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board on item number thirteen?
Let me ask one further question. Mr. Hughes, you had already provided the application, correct?
That's correct.
What has been the response, if any?
We have received five applicants to date. That that application went live last night. We had a couple glitches that we had to make some adjustments on, but as of five o'clock today, five applicants have submitted their interest. And just to let you know that once everything is established, we will send a mailing out to all of the taxpayers within the MSD, letting them know that they have the opportunity to apply for this committee.
So in light of that, then, when we talk about staggered terms, definitely, there will seem to be a pool of applicants when it comes, even if we decide on staggered terms, there's going to be a pool of applicants, so there won't be a lag or a gap because we will have, I know you're talking about if a specific person wants to serve again, but again, there's that equity piece of it that I'm looking at also, that it would give opportunity to more people who have a desire, who are qualified, who would like to serve.
Well, I think to Alderman Brinson's point, staggered terms will force a gap, where someone will not be able to serve a successive term for a brief gap. But beyond that, I think that one is going to serve the term that they're in. I'm not sure it provides any more opportunities. It just provides fewer, more frequent opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay, board, will you give some direction on item number thirteen? My only comment's going to be that I think we started talking about this about a year ago, so welcome to government.
Well, the only question on the table, will staggered terms be beneficial or no?
So I guess I'll offer this. If anyone is okay with the resolution as it is, I would entertain a motion, and we can see where the vote falls.
I'll make the motion just to see where it goes, but Mayor, I'd like to make a recommend, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution establishing an MSD advisory committee. I reckon that tells you where it goes.
All right, well, let's give let's give staff some direction this time, so when they bring it back at the next meeting, it'll be ready for adoption. I'll I'll kick off the conversation. If you're going to look at staggered terms, you're going to have to figure out which ones are going to get the short end of the stick, essentially. So there's going to be eleven, I'm sorry, ten, ten that we will actually appoint, the other five are ex officios. So out of the ten positions, which ones do you want to have a one-year term? Which ones do you want to have a two-year term? And which ones do you want to have a three-year term? Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think they should be proportional, both between the residence and the commercial. That way, you know, you don't have all commercial one year or three year, and all residents one year or three year. I mean, I think it just should be proportional between the two.
I agree.
Yeah, the trick is going to be of the six different commercial classes, how do we, some of those get one-year terms, two will get one-year terms, two will get two-year terms, and two will get three-year terms. So it would help us draft it to know which of those categories get the shorter first terms.
And to add to the complexity, the language about the successive terms, that needs to be altered, too, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we need to change that to the number of years or?
What I might do is suggest that we talk in terms of full three-year terms, so that if someone draws, if some seat draws the straw on a one or two-year term, that that not count toward a term.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I'll make a suggestion, since it's a little quiet. Item number one, or seat number one, commercial, I would say give that one three years. Seat number two, give it two years. Seat number three, give it one year. Seat number four, three years. Seat number five, two years. Seat number six, one year. And then on the residential piece, I guess you just go three, two, one, and three?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have a better suggestion?
Sounds good.
I'm fine with that.
I agree.
Any motion, or you good with that?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything else on item number thirteen? Moving on, item number fourteen, consider adopting a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement for thirty-two seventy-seven Old Airport Road. The other, Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. What you have before you at item number fourteen is a resolution to approve water and sewer use agreement for the property owners of thirty-two seventy-seven Old Airport Road. At this location, the property owners are looking to construct a single-family residential home. The property is currently located outside of municipal limits of New Bern. Our ordinance and our, Section seventy-four of our ordinance requires any property owner requiring water and sewer connection that's not currently within, inside municipal boundaries to enter into a standard water and sewer use agreement. That's what you have before you there. If there's any questions with that, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Jordan, I have a question on the map. The properties that's outlined in red, is that city limits?
Yes, sir. It's kind of a jigsaw puzzle as you go down Old Airport Road. We've got several new constructions over the last four or five years, and we also had a handful of septic failures that needed to connect to the city sewer that we slowly kind of jogged the city limit lines. Over time, you would envision that entire corridor would transition into the municipal limits.
Thank you.
You say septic failures?
Yes, sir, there's been a few in that area.
So then, the water will be coming in on the step system?
So we have a conventional sewer system that runs along Old Airport Road. We have a couple different methods for connecting people, depending on which which area their their home is and which portion of the sewer system they're close to.
Question for the city attorney. Scott, this property was also included in item number five, which was part of our consent agenda. So given the fact that as of right now, this property is outside the city limits, and that's why.
Correct. That's right, sir.
That's why the agreement is being proposed.
Correct.
But in the very near future, we may annex the property into the city.
Yes, sir.
Which would render this agreement basically moot. So do we need to put some language in the agreement, some kind of sunset language, that once, if the property gets annexed in, then that that agreement just disappears?
No, I'm not sure I'm tracking you.
I think the the agreement bridges us to get to annexation. So we're agreeing to provide them this sewer, assuming that they have to ask us to be annexed, and then it's up to the board whether or not we ask to be annexed.
Yes, sir. We cannot contract to annex them. We can contract to provide them sewer as long as they ask you, and you're free to say no. That's all the agreement does. It just requires them to ask, so that you have the option to annex or not.
In Alderman Preel, in some cases, this may be a lengthy period of time between when the the property owners enter into this agreement and when they're ready to build or they need the connection, maybe months or even a couple of years. In this case, I think the property owners are chomping at the bit to get started. So we've stacked everything up over a couple of meetings, so you get this agreement approved tonight, hopefully, and if so, I think the property owners are ready to come back next, at the next meeting with their petition for annexation.
Well, they've they've already made their request.
They've got everything lined up.
So they're kind of running in parallel. That's the only reason I brought it up.
That happens from time to time, but the property owners are ready to move forward construction, all kind of goes concurrently.
This gets them their sewer, which is what they need. The annexation is a separate issue that you'll decide next meeting.
That's actually, that's why I was asking about the red boundaries, because there have been some in the past that we've decided it did not make sense for us to annex in. We were happy to provide the sewer, but with the city property being all, city limits being all around that, I think it would make sense to annex them when we get to that.
Mayor, most of those that the board has opted not to annex are on the opposite side of Highway seventy, so on the river side of Highway seventy.
Any more questions on item numbers fourteen?
I have a question. I'm not familiar with this. It says that the homeowners want to connect their home to the city's water and sewer systems. The burden of cost lies on?
The homeowner.
The homeowner.
Yes, ma'am. Like any other connection, they'd be responsible for the connection fees and the system development fees for both the water and sewer.
Thank you. Thank you.
There are no other questions, I'll make one. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement for thirty-two seventy-seven Old Airport Road.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All right, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, Jordan. Item number fifteen, consider adopting amendment to section six dot one-four, dangerous or potentially dangerous dog of chapter six of the Code of Ordinances, Chief Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Aldman, um, first, the glass half-full, we live in a community where we have reasonable dog owners, and most of the dogs that we deal with are very pleasant, and we don't have problems, uh, the glass half-empty, that's not always the case, and twenty-twenty-two, we had an incident involving a dog that had essentially mauled and killed a much smaller dog, um, it resulted in an assessment on the part of the New Bern Police Department, specifically myself, to declare that dog a potentially dangerous dog, that dog owner had then requested the Board to hear the fact patterns of that case, the Board, uh, supported my decision, and the dog was deemed potentially dangerous. The language in our current code was such that as time moved on, there became a need to revisit that code, because the legislative intent was not clear, um, and it did not give the police department, namely our animal patrol unit, the ability to hold the dog owner accountable to what we felt was the legislative intent when the code was originally written, um, the fact patterns of the case that was before, um, myself, roughly a month or six weeks ago, um, sparked a absolute need to revisit this code, myself and Jamie Mosley, and also the city attorney, Mr. Davis, we dug into this code and realized, yes, we needed some changes, essentially what you're looking at is the new verbiage of the code, what this does in a practical sense is this, a potentially dangerous dog that is left outdoors unsupervised must be in an enclosure that is articulated in this code, which would include a six-foot fence, a concrete pad, a padlock, to ensure that this dog cannot get out, if the dog is let outdoors for recreational purposes or to relieve itself, that dog must follow certain guidelines, and it includes that the dog must be supervised at all times, must be in a fence that's no shorter than four feet high, in good condition, and must be supervised by a person, let me make sure that I'm using the correct terminology, of a competent person to supervise, and that dog must also be muzzled, there are some other, um, inclusionary, uh, language in this, to include that if a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog does get loose, that it is incumbent upon the dog owner to notify law enforcement and animal control immediately, so that we can dispatch the resources out there to hopefully capture this dog, um, there is, um, I have a great deal of sympathy for the persons that have to deal with the anxiety and stress that comes with living near a dog such as this, that has, um, a history of behavior that involves attacking smaller dogs, and with this new code language, it does provide us with much more legal, or provides us more legal grounds to hold the dog owner accountable for activities that quite candidly, we did not feel we had the legal authority to do six weeks ago, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and Attorney Scott Davis, who was very meticulous in, in his drafting of this ordinance, and I believe it addresses the things that we need to do moving forward, thank you.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to section six dash one-four, dangerous or potentially dangerous dog of chapter six of the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item number sixteen is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Rivers Withers Ravenel for civil engineering services, Mr. Chris Seberg.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman, uh, what is before you, we, we did, uh, publish a request for qualifications for the purpose of civil, civil engineering services, for the implementation of a asset inventory and assessment grant that we did receive, it's an amount of four hundred thousand dollars, the purpose of this grant is to take a look at our older or aging stormwater systems, to try to get a good assessment on that, and figure out what we need to do to, uh, make adjustments, fix, or whichever, so we, we did put out the RFQ on August, the eight, or we did put it out on July twenty-eighth of this year, we received quotes or proposals on August eighteenth from five qualified firms, and a three-member team from, uh, different staffs with the city did review these qualifications, and came up with a rating system that you see on the proposal, so the highest firm was Withers Ravenel with two-hundred-and-eighty-nine out of three-hundred, uh, so staff is recommending consideration with the contract with that organization for this purpose, and no more, are any questions?
Board have questions, I am number sixteen.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Withers Ravenel, Inc. for civil engineering services.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, uh, motion carries, uh, Mr. Manager, if I could make a request, we have done a lot of engineering, stormwater work, things of that nature over the past several years, could we get a report or, or just a list that shows all the different projects and the expenditures, um, because I think, you know, it's, it's been brought up tonight during Petition of Citizens and other discussions I've had, those are things that a lot of people don't necessarily see, um, I did an interview today with one of the news networks about hurricane preparedness and what we've learned through Hurricane Florence, I think it would be good reference to have that, because there's been millions of dollars the last five years, all right with you? Yeah, I think so. All right, yeah, we'll pull that and get it to the Board. Thank you, appreciate that. Item number seventeen, consider adopting an order authorizing the sale and issuance of the combined enterprise system revenue bond, series twenty-twenty-three, for the sewer improvements project, Ms. Ostrom.
Um, as discussed at the last two board meetings, the city is pursuing the issuance of its combined enterprise system revenue bonds, series two-thousand-twenty-three, in the amount of six-point-one million dollars to finance the Northwest Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase Two project, and the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project, Phase Three project, this resolution authorizes the issuance and sale of the bonds, as well as execution of the associated financial documents, Ted Cole with Davenport, and John Mies with Lambo, Baden Dickinson is here and available to answer any questions you have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing, I guess adopting, and order authorizing the sale and issuance of combined enterprise system revenue bond, series twenty-twenty-three, for the sewer improvements project.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number eighteen, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an installment purchase agreement contract for the twenty-twenty-three vehicle and equipment financing, Ms. Ostrom.
This financing of the purchase of vehicles and equipment was also discussed at the last two board meetings, the proposed resolution approves and authorizes the execution of an installment financing agreement and other documents with TD equipment finance for a loan not to exceed four-point-nine million, this transaction is scheduled to close September fourteenth.
This Board have questions on item number eighteen?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of an installment purchase contract for the twenty-twenty-three vehicle and equipment financing. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
I'll, you can be both if you want to be, Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number nineteen, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-three twenty-four, Ms. Ostrom.
This budget ordinance amendment aligns with the, um, financing that we are, you just approved, um, we are aligning the budgets for the general fund of sixty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, the water fund for three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, sewer fund for two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand twenty dollars, electric fund for nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and the solid waste fund for two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy.
Can we combine nineteen-twenty tomorrow?
Mr. Davis said yes, as long as it's unanimous.
Okay.
Ms. Ostrom, you want to give a description for twenty, which is consider adopting an ordinance amendment, the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund, and then item twenty-one is consider adopting an ordinance amendment to Northwest Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase Two Project Fund.
Sure, so these both also align with the financing with the Township Seven Sewer Improvement Projects Fund, um, for one million fifty-two thousand, uh, from loan proceeds, and the, um, Northwest Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase Two Project for five million forty-eight thousand with, um, loan proceeds as well.
This Board have questions on either nineteen-twenty or twenty-one?
If there are no questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three twenty-four, and adopt an ordinance amending the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund, and adopt an ordinance amending the Northwest Interceptor Rehabilit- Rehabilitation Phase Two Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twenty-two, appointments, Alderman Kinsey, you have one for planning and zoning?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, and then the Board has one for the civil service Board, police civil service Board.
Mayor, I'd like to, um, recommend that we appoint Mike Markham to the Police Civil Service Board, uh, Mike, or he's called by Mark, um, is, lives on Emmon Road for the past nineteen years, he's had numerous leadership roles with numerous organizations throughout the city and the county, his background is thirty-six years' experience in communication, in the communication industry, and he's involved in, um, numerous civic organizations, including the New Bern Fireman's Museum, or recently got off the New Bern Fireman's Museum, Mike Markham.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
That's, uh, all the appointments, so, uh, number twenty-three, attorneys report.
Nothing important, Mayor.
Twenty-four, city managers report.
Several things to give you an update on, the first thing I want to mention then is we recently received an award from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, we have been participating in the Adopt a Highway program for the last twenty-five years, so they sent this plaque, and we're excited to have that, so, uh, Public Works is the, uh, department that deals with that, so we appreciate all the work they do, um, wanted to also let you know that New Bern One-O-One, the fall season for that kicks off on September fourteenth, which is this Thursday, we currently have fourteen participants in this class, it is free to the public to participate, and we still have room for those that may have an interest in wanting to join, this is an eight-week program, it will meet every Thursday, with the exception of the last, uh, session, which will be held at, at the governing board meeting on November fourteenth, so if anyone has an interest in wanting to participate, they can go to our city website at newberncd.gov, click on the link for New Bern One-O-One, and they can sign up at, at that time, it's a very good program, it gives citizens an opportunity to see exactly, uh, how local government works, and they will have an opportunity to meet all of the, uh, departments and key staff, uh, that helped make the city, uh, run smoothly, next thing, we had a, uh, meeting earlier today with our contractors for the City Hall Elevator Project, it looks like we are going to be setting a ribbon cutting for October tenth, which will be the first, uh, board meeting in October, so we will let you know the time for that coming up in the next few weeks, and, uh, the last thing I have, you've got some information on your screens, and also a sheet in front of you, um, about six weeks ago or so, we had, um, completed a, uh, an appraisal on, uh, some property that we, we think should be surplus, this property is located at the corner of Laura Lane and Pine Tree Drive, it's approximately three-point-twenty-four acres, the tax value on this property is two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and the appraised value is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and so, let me see if the Board wanted to establish this as, um, as surplus property.
How long have we owned this property? Do you have a clue?
It, it is, it has been a considerable amount of time, it, it leased the late nineties.
Oh.
It says, D, 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 D,
Sign. It's gotta be marketed. I mean, we just can't put it on a website and expect somebody to buy it. But I think if we put some good signage out there.
And sell.
Okay.
Still.
Following the minimum bid of fifty percent of.
Oh, absolutely not.
No?
No, we're going to sell for more than that. That's as, I mean, that minimum bid we put in place, if you recall, you were on board. It's because we were getting ludicrous offers. It was helping to weed it out.
I'm not going to do that.
Does the board want to set a minimum?
Yes.
Probably a good idea.
I, I, I think the minimum would be a hundred. How much?
That's less than.
That's less than the value.
Two. Two hundred. Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah. Yes.
Well, now.
That's less than what the value is.
It's going to have to go through the process, right?
Right. Well, yeah, and now that we have an appraisal, you're going to be stuck with that as a floor.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's easy.
Okay, well, that's our floor. So, you don't need any direction for it?
Only, only to, to declare it surplus, and that's what you've done.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
And a sign.
Mr. Davis, the issue of the roadway, part of the roadway is included in the property boundary. Does that present a problem for the city if we were to sell the property?
I've not done a title search. I'll check it. I suspect either the GIS is wrong or it's subject to a right-of-way of a planted street, one of the two. But I'll certainly check that to make sure. And just so you know, too, we, we only sell by quitclaim or special warranty deed, so we wouldn't be warranting that issue anyway. But I'll double-check it just to make sure.
So, I want to go back, just to be clear on this minimum bid. I think the clerk was asking minimum bid versus what we're willing and able to sell it for.
That's right.
So, we just want to be clear that essentially the minimum bid is going to be this because we're not going to accept any, we can't accept anything less than this.
That's, that's the point. Yes, exactly.
Okay, just want to be clear. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's it for tonight, sir.
All right, new business, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. So, I attended the New Bern Area NPO Board Meeting, September seventh, and got an update from NC DOT on our local highway projects. That's the, the big map that I gave to all of you. Basically, the James City Project is thirty-seven percent complete. Utility relocation is nearing completion, so you'll begin to see more surface construction with traffic impacts. I think we've already seen that happening. Projected completion is still twenty twenty-five. The Havelock Bypass is sixty-nine percent complete and is on track to open early to mid twenty twenty-four. And then, the area in between Havelock and James City has a twenty twenty-five start date with a three-year completion. So, we'll be under construction for a while, at least in between New Bern and Havelock. With forty-three connectors still in right-of-way acquisition with a twenty twenty-five completion date, you'll see that on there. The advanced flashers on the Highway Seventeen business at Trent Creek Road are still under construction. And then, we'll have another board meeting this Friday to approve our submissions to the state for highway and bike pedestrian projects out to twenty thirty-four, and I'll provide those to you once we approve our submission. The, also, September seventh, I attended the community appreciation event at Cherry Point and heard from the base commander, the second mall commander, and the FRC East Deputy Commander. They're still projected to grow both active duty and civilian positions between now and twenty thirty on the order of about twelve hundred and fifty, with the potential of, of more. I'm excited to say we had our first Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting today. I was very excited about that. I'm looking forward to working with that group of citizens to figure out bike and sidewalk projects and also how to pay for them. But I looked at that as progress, having that first meeting. You talked about a year to get things together. We approved our bike and pedestrian plan a year ago, last September. So, six months from now, there won't be progress anymore. We'll hope to do more by then. Constitution Week is September seventeenth through the twenty-third. Both the Sons and Daughters of the American Revolution will be at the Farmer's Market this Saturday, eight to two, to begin that celebration. And the Daughters of the American Revolution will have a celebration at four PM at the History Center on September twenty-first. And then, those of you that haven't heard, the Wall That Heals will be returning to eastern North Carolina. As you recall, we had them here in New Bern a couple of years ago. The Vietnam Replica Wall will be in Havelock from November second through the fifth. And for more information and to volunteer, go to their website, thewallthathealshavelock.org. That's all one word. So, thewallthathealshavelock.org, and that's November second through the fifth. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Alderman Best?
Um, yes. I guess, Mr. Hughes, I can ask you this question, because I don't see Mr. Childs. I've got some calls from citizens that live within the Duffy Field community wanting to know, is the city going to strike the freshly paved streets over there? Are you going to strike them? Because I just need to, an answer. So, when citizens call me, I'll know how to answer that question. He's not here. I didn't see him.
We'll, we'll get that information for you.
Okay. And there was one other thing. Oh, yes. I can address this to Chief Gallagher. If you would please have more patrol in the seventy to fifty-five to forty-three area, there's a lot of speeders going through there. You know, school has just started back, and they are passing on that highway, passing school buses, and it's, if you can address that, I would appreciate it. If you could have more officers out there, give them tickets, whatever it needs to take for these, for the safety of our kids. And that's it.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yesterday was nine eleven. Saddest day in this country. We need to continue to lift up the families and pray for our country, that we have a great country called America. And if we can continue to do that, we can make a change. That's all I have, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Um, yes. Mr. Manager, I'm quite interested in learning more about a software product called Shot Finder or Shot Spotter or something.
Yes, sir.
Do you think at some point in the near future that we might be able to have a presentation on that and what it might cost to implement that program?
If the board would like, we could have a brief presentation at the next meeting.
Does the board know what this, what we're talking about?
Yeah.
No.
This is a, well, Chief, can, can we ask the chief to come up and explain exactly what this product does? I know they have it in the city of Greenville, and it's been very beneficial to the city of Greenville.
So, Alderman Astor, yes, I am prepared to provide that presentation at any time that, that you would like that. Shot Spotter is technology that triangulates in real time the location of gunfire that occurs in one mile radius increments. The amounts of monies to start the program in a place like New Bern would be roughly seventy-nine thousand dollars, and every year thereafter, it's roughly fifty thousand dollars.
So, so, so if the board would understand, if someone walks outside and fires a gun, within seconds, you're notified, your police officers are notified that there's been a gunfire, within, I understand, in some, in most cases, it's within ten feet of where the gun was fired, and it also tells you what, the caliber of the gun that was fired.
It's very sophisticated, yes. As long as that, a gun was fired within the one square mi, the one square mile radius, that it is almost instantaneous. Not only is our Communications Division notified, but also the patrol officers on the street are notified immediately. So, they do not have to wait to be dispatched. They will know immediately that a nine millimeter was fired at this location, right within roughly ten feet of, of its location, and whether or not there's multiple shots. So, it will know that five nine millimeters were shot, followed by six forty cal or a, a two-two-three, which is a M six, M sixteen-style weapon.
So, so you, there will be like transformers or something in certain areas that it's going to actually pick up on this?
Well, yes. There are, there is equipment. I don't know what it is referred to or how it is called, but it does pick up the, the sounds of gunfire. How many is needed to cover one square mile is depending on the geographical area. Shot Spotter will come in. They have engineers that can figure that out and will place those in, in such a, a fashion that it will triangulate and capture all of that gunfire we've mentioned. And it, it knows the difference between a gun and a backfired car or fireworks. It, it can distinguish all of those sounds.
And is, is my understanding, and you can get into this when you do your presentation, if the board so decides to want to hear it, but it's my understanding, too, that in the city of Greenville, that they actually have sponsors that help pay the renewal fees each year? Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. I was in Greenville last week and was given a presentation on that, and part of that presentation was how it is financed, and UNC, I'm sorry, ECU covers part of that cost. The Housing Authority covers part of that cost, and I think they have one or two other sponsors.
I, I think it would be worthwhile to, for the board to get educated on such a piece of technology that we, you know, might want to try to bring to this city.
I think it's for our need for this city, especially in certain areas of this city where we've had a lot of crime and we've had a lot of gunshot and, and deaths occurred. I would definitely want to hear your presentation and move forward with it.
I'd, I'd like to hear it now, too, because I think that's a lower cost than what we were previously told, so, a couple of years ago. Well, let me say this. Shot Spotter provides a reduced cost based on the size of the municipality. We fall into this Goldilocks zone where we are paying far less than Greenville is paying because they are a much larger agency. So, their cost for the same square mile is a lot more than what we would pay.
I've heard three. I'm, I'm fine. That's, that's four, anyway. Okay, good.
Thank you, and I have nothing else.
All right, Alderman Royal?
I had a question. I wanted to follow up. I know we talked about this previously, and Mr. Byron King brought it up tonight about the vape shops, businesses. My question is, do we have any ordinances that may regulate or limit the location or number of businesses that may have a potential negative impact on the community?
Mr. Davis, if I remember correctly, we made some changes to our zoning ordinance a few years ago?
Yes, sir. I, I believe we created a new category for those shops and limited them to, I believe, RC three, commercial districts only, which are the highest density, highest traffic areas. That's my recollection. I'd have to look it up otherwise.
I, I will tell you that I have received numerous complaints about two things. Just the fact of what they sell, whether the, the questions are whether they're legal or not, and then the lights around the outside of them. And I know that Development Services staff has been working diligently on addressing those, because those lights are illegal. They don't, they, they're not in compliance with our ordinance. But I'll, I'll be more than happy if the board wants to look into making it more restrictive. I, I know that, you know, we have to be careful from a legal perspective on what we can and can't do, but I, for one, I'm tired of seeing them myself. I'm tired of hearing complaints, and if they're operating illegally, they need to be shut down.
Well, for instance, stores that sell alcoholic beverages, is, is there some ordinance that can't be within so many feet of such and such? Perhaps, as the board, as long as we stay within legal ramifications, can, again, as you said, Mayor, come up with some ordinance that will address this?
Mr. Davis, could you maybe do some research and get back to us?
Happy to, yes, sir.
Well, I have a question. Mr. Davis, these vape, vape shops, are they actually controlled by the ALE off?
Not that I'm aware of, ma'am, but I'll, I'll, I'll double-check.
Okay. On what they can and cannot sell?
I, I do know that our sheriff and his department has been working on these, because they're selling illegal substances inside. They have illegal gambling machines. They're selling counterfeit merchandise, and it's a, it's a nuisance to our city. So, I appreciate you bringing it up.
And thank you, Mr. King, for bringing it up also.
All right, Alderman Pril?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, I just wanted to thank staff for their support for MS Bike this year. Was there Saturday to welcome the riders and help kick them off. I think it's a pretty impactful event that takes place, and I just really wanted to, there's so many things that happen in our city. I can't sit here and tell you about all of them, but the reason I wanted to share this one is, I was talking to some of the folks in charge, and they just went on and on and on about how helpful and welcoming New Bern was. They do these, these rides all over the country. They said that there's nowhere like New Bern, North Carolina, and the support that they get here. I think they raised one point two or one point three million dollars, so it's, they do a really, really good job. So, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir. Briefly, we'll need you to discuss the potential acquisition of real property since one forty-three through ten-eleven to eight-five.
You have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.